Good evening, everyone. Very different night for us, having council on a Tuesday night before Thanksgiving. But I'm going to call this meeting to order. Will you all please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go ahead and start with roll call. Councilman Owen?
Present.
Councilman McGoffin?
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Present.
Councilwoman Burns?
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Present.
Councilman Allen?
Present.
And Councilwoman Lavaca has asked to be excused. He has a family situation that arose, so...
Madam Mayor, may I make a motion to excuse him?
Absolutely.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. All right, looking for approval of the agenda, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. All right, thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman McGoffin, seconded by Councilman Owen. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Consent agenda, items one through nine, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I need to recuse myself from item number six on the consent agenda due to a conflict of interest.
And I do as well for number five.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Yours for number six?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, Bob, okay, all right. So, so we are going to...I don't think I have to worry about that, as long as you're recusing yourself. So, all those in favor, wait, okay, for number five?
Five, please.
Okay, I'll mark that down. So, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make that motion.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign? Okay, I do believe we had a quorum there, so that works. Right. Moving on to city administrative report. Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Counsel, no report this evening.
All right, thank you. Councilmember reports, Councilman Owen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have anything other than I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and hope everyone's healthy and enjoys the whole day with their family. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman McGoffin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to echo those statements. I hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
I would just like to let everybody know, you might have seen on social media and Facebook, but there is a city cleanup day on December 2nd, open and available to anybody within the city limits that would like to bring their yard waste over and dump that free of charge. That's a great opportunity to clean up your yards. Other than that, have a great Thanksgiving. I would also like to have permission to be excused from the study session on December 6th. I'm unavailable that day.
All right, so is, is there any objection to...okay?
I'm just asking about, Sarah, is that December 2nd?
No, it would be the 6th.
Oh.
It's on the Saturday, though.
Oh, the cleanup day, yes, it's Saturday.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the cleanup.
Oh, use it.
The 6th, though, is there any objection to Councilwoman Diamond? Okay, recusing herself, or not recusing herself, but stepping away. All right, no problem, great, thank you. Councilman Burns?
Well, just, everybody have a happy Thanksgiving and safe travels.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
Well, this Saturday is going to be Shop Small Saturday, so I encourage all of you to visit our downtown businesses and watch the Christmas tree be put up by the volunteers.
Thank you. Councilman Allen?
Nothing to report tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So, I only have a couple of things. It's just a reminder, once again, for the city and county leaders' work session being put on by North Star, it's going to be on Wednesday, November 29th, from 5:00 to 8:00. There'll be a social and a dinner, and then a discussion. And we really value your input and would love to hear what you have to say in any direction that you may want to encourage us to go in or look at. So if you are available, please RSVP. I know somebody from, I think Joe has already done that, Joe will be there, so I hope you all can make it. The other is the Elected Officials Essential 2023 in Mount Vernon. If you have not registered for that yet, just encouraging you to do that. And we can do that for you, and we will pay for it, so all you need to do is let us know, and we'll take care of that. And moving on then to public comment. So, is there anybody here I saw, Amy, where you would like to make public comment? Please go ahead and come forward. We ask that you give your name and address, and I see you've opted not to do that. Do you have another address or something that maybe we could just use?
Uh, no, same as last time. I don't wish to be hate crime, so I'm not going to give my address in public. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Amy. So, go ahead.
I'm Amy Wood. I live in Sedro Wully. November is Transgender Visibility Month, and yesterday was Transgender Day of Remembrance, where we honor those who lost their lives to violence and discrimination. I'm here to educate you and to give you insight onto what some refer to as the transgender agenda. The agenda for trans youth is to survive to adulthood. The agenda of transgender adults is to survive and thrive authentically as theirselves, to be treated with common decency and respect like any other person. That's it. There's no ulterior motive, there's no plan to turn your kids gay, they just want to live in peace and safely. As violence against members of marginalized communities is on the rise nationwide, take a moment to consider if you yourself are indoctrinating your children into closed-mindedness, hatred, and bigotry against their neighbors. Not only does it cost nothing to be kind, but as leaders in this community, discrimination due to your personal prejudice and ignorance on this topic is unacceptable. Your job as representatives of the city is to serve all individuals who live here, including your transgender community, which there is. I would like to share a personal story. My ex-boyfriend is a trans woman. The man I met almost 15 years ago was quiet, reclusive, very shy, and had severe reactions to being touched by other people. That shy, reclusive man is now a beautiful, outgoing trans woman. She's a leader, a teacher, and a social butterfly. She's the happiest I've ever seen her, and she is thriving, because she is now the person on the outside that she has always been on the inside. Many transgender individuals, including herself, have known this about themselves since childhood, but stashed it away. My dear friend explained to me that the man she used to be never truly existed. It was as though she had been putting on a play for more than 30 years. She was acting, and now she's herself. Every child that feels this way in every school district deserves to go to school and feel safe and accepted as they are. Every transgender adult that lives or works in every town deserves the same. For us to be an example of what a real hometown community should be is loving and inviting to all people who pass through the streets of Sedro Wully. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Is there anybody else here in the chamber who would like to make a public comment? And how about anybody online, if you can unmute yourself? All right, seeing none, I am going to close public comment, and we are going to go into a public hearing. And so, the way that the public hearing is going to go is, it's the same ways we always do, so it'll be Kelly, actually, who'll be talking about, actually, our 2023 budget amendment, number three. And after she has completed what she has to share, I will open it up to the public. After the public shares, we will bring it open to the council to do Q and A or comments. And because this is a first read, we will not be voting on this tonight. But, so we will begin. Kelly, you want to begin, please, thank you.
Good evening. So this is the final, excuse me, budget amendment for the year. We plan to have the public hearing tonight, which we're doing, and have a second read on December 13th, the last meeting of the year. Similar to prior budget amendments, we presented this information in a couple of different formats. The first one is in the ordinance itself, where we showed budgeted revenue, budgeted expenditures, and the projected excess or deficit resulting from that. We also included a memo that shows our actual beginning cash for each fund, our new budgeted revenues and expenditures, and then what our projected ending cash would be. And then finally, a report from our GL system, just showing that information in greater detail, showing the original budget, which in our system is the approved budget amendment number two, is as the original, and the proposed budget, any differences and remarks from staff regarding those changes? And then on the final page of that report is a summary of that information by fund. Couple of highlights for things in this, there's not a whole lot of changes in this budget amendment. We adjusted some of the revenues, just based on year-to-date actuals and projections for the end of the year. We have also increased, slight increases in our legal fees for litigation and defense based on our year-to-date actuals. We made some adjustments to the Arterial Street Fund 104, based on our actual projects we're completing, and increases to the Public Works Facility for the wastewater treatment plant building and the Public Works Building completing that project. In the fiscal impact, we gave it kind of even an additional breakdown, just showing at a very high level what the changes were made to each of the funds. As you can see, not all of our funds had changes, just a small number of them. And as the mayor stated, this is the first read, so we have no recommended action, but I'm happy to answer any questions or take back any questions you may have to get more detailed answers.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. So I'm going to open this up to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the chamber who would like to make comment regarding the 2023 budget amendment number three, ordinance number 206323? And no one did, we did have a sign-up sheet, no one signed up, but I am opening this up if anybody would like to make comment. Okay, hearing none, how about online? Is there anyone who would like to make comment? All right, I don't see that happening, so we will open this up to the council. Is there anyone on the dais here who would like to make comment or has questions?
Just a couple of questions. I noticed a lot of zeros and 100%, everything looked pretty normal. Did you start the budget at January of 2023? Because I didn't see any, everything I saw was third quarter to fourth quarter.
The detailed report just has the total, the original budget, so what our current budget is for all of 2023, and the proposed budget is what we propose for all of 2023.
So that included everything from 2023?
Yep.
I better get back and look harder, okay.
It doesn't, the numbers in there only are showing the budget numbers, it doesn't show the budgeted numbers compared to the year-to-date.
Also, we're, this is a biennium budget, so it's two years, 2022, 2023. And in fact, for the council that will be remaining here, will be working on the biennium budget for 24, 25.
Everything seemed to be within the zero or 100%, you know, I mean, it was only, like, you brought out that there was a couple of, you know, like, in the parks and stuff, you know, I mean, there was a couple, but everything pretty much fell into the budget, right?
I'm not sure I understand your question. These are, the only numbers presented are the current budget and what our proposed budget is. None of these numbers are what we've spent year-to-date compared to the budget, so it's not comparing, it's not, it's not comparing if we've gone over or under in, in any area, it's just showing what our new budget will be in total for all of 2023, after we adopt this ordinance.
Can you show budget overruns that are maybe glaring or not glaring?
Yeah, we don't have that in this document here, but we do show quarterly data to, first to the finance, generally first to the Finance Committee, and then we post it, but we can show budget compared to year-to-date actuals.
Is that helpful? Okay, yeah. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. Again, this is a first read, so we are not moving on this. And we will move into unfinished business. The first item is the 2024 budgeted levy, ordinance 205923. This is the second read. And Kelly, are you doing this one as well?
Yes. So not much, not much has changed from the first read of this. Every year, the city is required to pass an ordinance authorizing our budgeted levy amount, so the amount of property tax we can collect in our jurisdiction. We then send that ordinance and other documentation to Skagit County to process it and levy that amount for us. We have provided two options similar to the last meeting. Option one is accepting the levied lid lift of an additional 81 cents per $1,000 of property value. This would result in a 2024 budgeted levy of about $4.6 million. Option two is to do the base levy from last year, add the bank capacity and our allowable 1% as well as any new construction, which would result in a total budgeted levy of about $3.2 million. Staff recommend that we go with option one, as this is in line with the anticipated results of the November 7th general election. Election results are not final, but as of November 15th, the, this item has a 54% approval. I also checked it today, the last update was from today at about 10:30, and it has a 54.2% approval currently. We anticipate no major changes in that number, so we recommend that council select option one in line with the voters. And I think that's about it.
Are there any questions for Kelly? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion for option one?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2059-23, an ordinance approving the property tax levy and increase of .8165 per 1,000 of property value.
All right.
Madam Mayor, for clarification, how much would that be for a $500,000 house?
So we had those figures out, does anybody have access to those?
I don't immediately have access.
Can you figure, would it be $400 a year for a $500,000 house?
I'd hate to quote something incorrectly, but it is the approximate numbers we estimated in our original discussions for this item. Unfortunately, I didn't bring that information tonight. But these are the...
It's a pretty big swoop to just hit the taxpayers with. I know they passed it, but is it $400, is it $200 on a normal house, 400, $500,000 house?
Again, I'd hate to quote some say yes or no when I can't remember the exact figures. We, we had several different estimates based on home values, and I can't quite remember the answer to 500,000. I believe we have it posted on our website.
I don't do websites.
It would be in the frequently asked questions from the...
Well, so, on the table is a motion. The motion was to accept option number one, which is a levy lid lift of an additional .8165 per 1,000 property value. That motion was made by Councilman Burns. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may answer his question, of course, the website jumped on me as soon as I started trying to talk. A homeowner with a home value of $400,000 would pay an additional $326.58 per year or $27.22 a month. In 2023, the levy rate was 1.8008. The homeowner paid $720.32 in the City of Sedro Wully property tax. If the levy was increased to 2.6173, the homeowner would pay $1,046.90. That's per the city website, anyway.
Okay. All right, so again, we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman McGoffin for option one, with the additional .8165. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So, okay, so I'll go down the line, I didn't hear, so Councilman Owen?
Pardon?
You, except, exceptions? Option one was put on the table, are you for or against?
Yeah. As you know, I hate taxes.
Yeah.
Like utility taxes, I don't mind, because everybody pays. But I hate to see just the property owners get pinched every time.
Right, but they did approve the levy.
I know, I know they did, but...
So the option is to approve what the levy is offering. Are you for, is this a yes or a no for you?
I guess yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilman McGoffin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Yes, I'll honor the voters.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kestie?
I too will honor the voters.
Councilman Allen?
No at this time, Madam Mayor, unless they come back with a third read with the actual amounts.
All right, well, we have, of the six council members here, we have five for, one against. The opposition is from Councilman Allen, so motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the second item on unfinished business, it's the 2024 utilities rates, and I don't know, Charlie, are you going to be handling this?
Yeah, I'm pitching for, Mark continues to be out of town, but yes, counsel, this is the second read. We spent a full work session on it, had a first read at the last council meeting. There are three ordinances that would require action that are attached to this item. And just as a reminder, the, of the rates that we're looking at, sanitary sewer would go up 4%, solid waste 4.8, and stormwater 3.
Okay, so are there any questions? I know we've gone over this several times, Mark gave a very thorough overview of this. Are there any comments or questions before I call for a motion? Okay, hearing none, for the first motion, the first motion is to adopt ordinance number 2060-23, which is increasing the 2024 fees and charges for the use of the City of Sedro Wully sanitary sewer system. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion.
I'll take that motion.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilman McGoffin, seconded by Councilman Allen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, moving on to the second motion, to adopt ordinance number 2061-23, amending section 8.04.057, 075, excuse me, of the Sedro Wully Municipal Code to increase the 2024 solid waste utility rates and charges. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Allen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries, thank you. Motion to adopt ordinance number 2062-23, amending the 2024 fees and charges of the use of the City of Sedro Wully Storm and Surface Water Utility System. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Diamond, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, thank you. Moving on then to the last item of the night, which is new business, and that is going to be presented by Nicole, is the amendment to the municipal code to remove statement in the intent section restricting R15 zoning designations. This is ordinance number 205823, and it is a first read, so no action required tonight.
Mayor, Hillary West is online, he's going to present this item.
Oh, fantastic, thank you. Thank you, Hillary, go ahead.
Good evening, council and mayor. The item before you concerns removal of an intent statement in chapter 17.16 of the municipal code. These are the regulations for the R residential 15 zoning district. The intent statement says the following, quote, "Because multifamily is permitted in the MC and CBD zones, no new areas shall be designated R15," unquote. This statement was adopted into the municipal code in 2004, at a time when there was a lot of concern regarding multifamily being established in Sedro Wully. A copy of the ordinance adopting this intent statement is included in your packet as attachment A. And a draft ordinance presented for first reading tonight that would implement removal of the statement is included as attachment B. This statement, by way of brief background, this statement was recently at issue in a proposed rezone that was before the Planning Commission. Planning Commission recommended unanimously that the statement be removed from the municipal code, because by having that statement in the code, the Planning Commission found that it couldn't move further in consideration of the proposed rezone. It discussed, Planning Commission discussed this intent statement, and then recommended unanimously that it be removed. Staff finds in addition that the statement is unnecessarily confusing, as it does not have regulatory authority, and as a statement of intent, it is contrary to the region-wide effort to find solutions to the housing crisis. As it happens, the city's attorney that was present in 2004, when this intent statement was first adopted, appeared before the Planning Commission, when the Planning Commission discussed removal of this statement. And the attorney found, or told the Planning Commission, that this intent statement would not have any regulatory authority and would not be enforceable, as the comprehensive plan is really the place to have intent language of this kind. But it's not the recommendation of the Planning Commission or of staff. or of staff for that matter, that the comprehensive plan include this kind of intent statement because it would most likely be flagged by the state as contrary to the current effort to meet housing needs across the region. So to finalize, the ordinance that would remove this statement is included as attachment B in your packet. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So are there any questions for Hillary?
I have a question. I understand what they were trying to do in 2004 in regards to the intent, and I'm struggling to understand. The state has its regulations as to what we're supposed to do, but the city has its limitations as to what we can actually handle, right? So if we actually put the language in there and allow for the rezones into R15s into various areas, we're already in a situation where our infrastructure cannot support the growth and development that is currently going on. And what, what kind of impact to that, is that going to have by taking that language out and then not putting it into a comprehensive plan? I understand that there's a conflict there, but the state cannot, cannot put on the city a burden that they can't handle. So, I mean, we have, we have traffic and roads that can't keep up with the amount of people coming and going. We have first responders and issues with that in responding to call times and availability and staffing. We have in both police and fire. We have, I mean, just the growth in and of itself is not something that is, is easy to take on. And there's currently no discussion by the Department of Transportation to Wyden Cook Road or to Highway 20 to allow additional people to come in and out. And so by creating those R15s and putting us into more of a bedroom community without the infrastructure to support it, it really puts us in, into a big problem. And so I'm really struggling. I understand what you're saying in, in regards to the discussion with the past attorney. That makes complete sense to me, but it does not make sense to me to remove that completely and not put it somewhere else because as a city, we still have to protect ourselves.
Yes, well, what I would say, first of all, is that the city always retains the ultimate authority whether to approve a rezon or not. You don't need an intent statement in any particular chapter of the zoning code to retain that authority. You have that authority now. What I would point out as, as your planning staff is that the place to address the impacts that multifamily development might have in Seadrwelly is in the performance standards that you attach to multifamily development in your code. In other words, and I have experienced this in other locations in the past, you can have transportation requirements that apply to multifamily development. You can have transportation impact fees that are a means of collecting revenue that can be used for transportation improvements in accordance with your capital facilities plan. You can have design standards that, that will affect how the multifamily development fits into a particular piece of property or a particular neighborhood in town. And other regulatory requirements, setbacks, lot coverage, landscaping, pedestrian access, vehicular parking, all of those are standards that you can and should have in the municipal code to address development of multifamily housing. So an intent statement in and of itself really doesn't provide you anything that, number one, you didn't already have. And number two, it doesn't give you any tools to must, to, to manage that multifamily development in a way to get the result that you want. So the only thing that intent statement is doing for you at this time is to serve as a red flag that you're waving in front of the state saying, you know, we're Seadrwelly, and we just don't want to take any of the housing that the region may need in order to serve future populations. So I would point out that there are better ways to do this, I guess, as your professional staff is, is what I would say.
Okay, I'm just-
Hillary, perhaps also consider bringing up concurrency and how that operates? Because really, the intent of your concurrency codes is to address what Councilmember Diamond is bringing up, right? The intent is to require developers to provide enough services as part of their development or enough money, enough, enough development fees to address any deficiencies that are caused by the development itself. So, you know, in looking at the code, looking at concurrency is a great idea as well.
Absolutely. Concurrent requirements are key to development review in, in today's landscape. I mean, the, the RCW in particular, there's RCW 82.02020, which provides the specific authority to jurisdictions to require impact payments with development approval. And concurrency is a tool that's provided by state law as a way to require development to pay its own way, as the saying goes. Pay its own way with development approval. So if they don't meet concurrency, they don't get development approval. It's how it's, it's supposed to operate. So concurrency is a tool that we now have to require development to pay its way.
Okay, this is the, the first read on this. Are there any cookie-cutter ways to fix this and come back with a second reading that has more definitive answers for us?
Well, the, the way that I would suggest the city move forward on this is by taking this, the concerns and the issues related to multifamily housing development as a central part of the work that's going to be happening on the housing element of the comprehensive plan. And that housing element is where the policy statements regarding housing and the city's concerns and wishes regarding multifamily housing really are, is, are where they should be located. The zoning code is the place where the city implements the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan is where the policies and intent statements are. The zoning code is where the regulations are. So it's, it's not the appropriate place to have the regu, in the regulatory chapter, the intent statement of whether multifamily is desired or not desired.
It seems to me that we need solutions more than intents. You know, I mean, we need some solutions to where we can implement something that will have teeth and, and stand up to the state standards, if you will.
And you have something in mind for that?
You got, you're the, the, the brains, and so is the lawyer. You know, I mean, that's, that's what your jobs are, okay?
Well, yeah, and, and my recommendation, Councilman, is that the intent statement and the policy statements be in the comprehensive plan. That's where they belong. They don't belong in the zoning code. And right now, they're not giving you, this intent statement in particular, it's not giving you any additional authority or any additional power that you don't already have. What it's doing is it's, is it's confusing the public, and it's acting as kind of a red flag to the state. So that's where this, the direction of, of this recommendation is coming from.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I just had a question more about clarity because I've heard a couple different statements from around and then from what's in the packet. Is it my understanding that right now, the planning commission, they can't move forward because of this statement? Or did I hear that incorrectly?
No, you heard that incorrectly. They, they reached kind of a wall here in consideration of the application because of that intent statement that's right in the, right in the language of the chapter. So they stopped consideration, discussed that intent statement, held a public hearing on it, and recommended that that intent statement be removed.
Okay, thank you. Because it was just starting to sound like they weren't able to proceed, which would be giving this intent statement more power than it sounds like it actually has. So from my understanding, whether we have it or not would not prevent someone right now from putting an R15 through. It's just the planning commission is confused and unable to proceed because there's not clarity. Is that correct?
Well, the, the, the city attorney that was here at the time that intent, that intent statement was adopted felt that it doesn't have any regulatory authority. I would direct that question now to your current city attorney to see if Nikki has a particular difference of opinion. But I, I don't believe it has regulatory authority.
So it certainly is not something that belongs in the regulatory side of all of our documents. It belongs in the planning side of things. Whether or not it has any actual teeth, I think is something that is legally up in the air. I have seen a lupa action where they did take into account the intent statement. And so I don't want to say, yes, it absolutely could have teeth, but I also don't want to say no, that it doesn't have any teeth. So everything that Hillary has said thus far, I completely agree with. Your zoning code is the flowdown from the policy document. It's the regulatory system that is put in place that implements those bigger policy decisions that are in the comprehensive plan. So it is something that is confusing. It is something that is a red flag to the state, and it, it would certainly be better if it were not in the code. Hillary is also completely accurate in stating that the city retains the authority to determine whether or not it wants to rezon something. And if it doesn't want to rezon a piece of property, then it does not have to do so.
Okay, thank you. I'm in support of removing that. It sounds like it's causing a lot of confusion, and we retain the ability to choose whether or not something does go to that zone. So, thank you, guys.
Councilman Burns?
Just wanted to clarify for everyone. When you refer to the city, you are referring to the city council's approval of the change from, say, R7 to R15. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any more questions? All right, it is a first read, so this will be coming back to us. I'm assuming on the 13th, correct? All right. All right, thank you, Hillary. Appreciate that. Thank you, Nikki. Clarification's really good. And I do want to state to the council that if you have more questions or concerns, Hillary or even Nikki might be a good resource for you. Probably even Charlie could be a real good resource for you as far as looking it up. Definitely Nicole would be somebody that you could get in touch with, and she'd be able to answer some questions for you. I think what I appreciate about this is that we are in the process of looking at our comprehensive plan and the changes that need to happen. And I think this is a, it's, it's giving us kind of a heads up as to what we may want to see put or clarified or definitely refined in the comprehensive plan when it comes to housing. Okay, with that, there is nothing else on our agenda. We will be meeting after I close this meeting for a closed session. And Councilwoman Kestie, you did want to recuse yourself? Yep, okay, thank you very much. That's very appropriate. And with that, our next meeting is December 6th, and we will see you then. We are adjourned.